Call the meeting to order any items from the public. All right. Call the meeting to order any items from the public. All right. Call the meeting to order any items from the public. All right. Call the meeting to order any items from the public. All right. Call the meeting to order any items from the public. All right. Call the meeting to order any items from the public. All right. Call the meeting to order any items from the public. All right. Call the meeting to order any items from the public. All right. Call the meeting to order any items from the public. All right. Call the meeting to order any items from the public. All right. Call the meeting to order any items from the public. All right. Call the meeting to order any items from the public. All right. Call the meeting to order any items from the public. All right. Call the meeting to order any items from the public. All right. Call the meeting to order any items from the public. All right. Call the meeting to order any items from the public. All right. Call the meeting to order any items from the public. All right. Call the meeting to order any items from the public. All right. Call the meeting to order any items from the public. All right. Call the meeting to order any items from the public. All right. Call the meeting to order any items from the public. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, I move we approve the agenda for if there's no modifications or changes with Thursday, September the ninth.
All right, have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Any questions for Tracy on the purchase order?
Mr. President, I can just bring one matter to your attention. On page two, you'll see that there is a payment Blackrock Roofing, an amount of $25,000 for 800 Emmett Brown Drive. We do have the roof on that building complete. The fascia and soffit is done, and they finished the gutters and downspouts last week. So that building is now complete.
They say it looks like a much better.
Much better building. We also replaced the roof control.
Oh, they did? Okay.
That's now done. We ordered the exterior signs for a 800 Emmett Brown Drive. It says Recovery Resources Center. Our facilities department is now working in the one back building to remove the interior non-load bearing wall that we had put up there previously. We hope to have recovery resources moved down everybody into this month. We have all the players involved now.
Those buildings look better than I've ever seen them look. They look, what do you think?
Oh, yeah, that roof, that really made a difference.
Well, and the color too. I think it blends much better with the building. Looks really good.
And we're looking at the parking lot of animal control, see what we can do.
Did they, I noticed that, I know a few days ago, I had seen some stuff piled sitting out in front of the animal control. Did that get moved?
Yes.
They gotta be careful about that. I think if we do something down there, might have to have some grading done. All right. Anything else? No internal budget revisions, quite a few changes status and penny, you know, I'll need your help on some of these names probably. New hire recommendation received from Jennifer Swisher, 911, Director for the following individuals as call takers with an annual salary of $40,310 effective October 12, 2021. Brittany Shoyer, Sandra Bittner, Samantha Stone Street, Beverly Mason, and Kristen Chapo. New hire recommendation received from Randy Lilly, Director of Emergency Management Services for Adam Malk as a firefighter/ hazmat tech with an annual salary of $44,909 effective September 27, 2021. Change in status received from Tim Zaya, Director of Community Corrections for the following employees effective September 13, 2021. Charles Visalo? Facilio is going from home confinement supervisor to home confinement officer. His salary will go from $48,010 to $38,311. Doug Webb is going from home confinement officer to home confinement supervisor. His salary will be going from $37,509 to $44,066. Change in status received from Randy Lilly, Director of Emergency Management Services for Justin Shank. He is going from lieutenant firefighter 40-hour per week to lieutenant firefighter 56-hour per week. His salary will go from $59,099 to $68,169 effective September 21, 2021.
Where is he stationed at?
He, I don't know where he's going. I know he's going to Baker, but I don't know where he's at.
Petzville, right?
And then we'll be doing internal testing, coaching for the 40-hour per week lieutenant.
He's a nice young man. He's not old like the rest of us. Is he? Looks like he was younger then. Letter of resignation received from 911. I was gonna say. I mean, that's my daughter's age. Letter of resignation received from 911 for Susan Anderson effective September 1, 2021. Letter of resignation received from the Finance Office for Myra Cabarello effective September 15, 2021. Letter of resignation received from the Recovery Resource Center for Bo Baker effective September 3, 2021.
So what are we doing about finance?
We met, of course, been working with the staff down there. We met with Cox Holiday on Tuesday. They've been working on our financials for the last fiscal year in anticipation of the RFP for the audit. We haven't even received notice that we need to act for a single audit from the auditor's office. So they're going to, they can't finish the financial statements since the last fiscal year's been closed out. So they're going to focus in the next couple of weeks on closing out last fiscal year. We continue to tweak the new software system. They're gonna work with us on that. Recruitment notice is ready to go out for Finance Director that will go out. So it's a long way saying between Cox Holiday and being the current staff. We've got everything covered for the next four, quarter to eight weeks anyway. We're actually in pretty good shape. And I met with Mrs. Malk, kept her surprise of what's for 911 session.
Yeah, Mrs. Malk will be advertised for the position of Director here before tomorrow.
For Finance Director? Now that will be through.
Yeah. Be through you with the direction, Miss Malk.
And that recruitment notice is almost done. Updating the job description as well.
Okay, all right. We have approval minutes on August 26, 2021. Everyone was present but Mr. Davis.
What the heck? That was actually in Mental Health Day.
So you'll be taking more of those, huh?
More and more Thursdays I probably will be asking, so like, no.
All right, any change? Any changes or corrections? All right, county council calendars, we will be here next Thursday at 9:30 a.m. Boards and Commissions, Fire Board tonight in the chambers at 6:30. On Monday, the 13th at 2:30 p.m., LEPC, 5:00 p.m., Water District, 6:00 p.m., Farm Land Protection. Wednesday, the 15th, 4:00 p.m., Criminal Justice, 6:00 p.m., Solid Waste Authority. Any changes or corrections on those?
Yes, sir. On the 13th, Monday, the Region 9 Planning and Development Council will meet at 12 o'clock in Ransom, West Virginia. An actual meeting.
That's a good thing.
We get lunch and everything.
I'll be out of town.
I'll be there.
I'm taking three mental health days in every week.
Starting to schedule what you were, order of assessment of yields for October. We're scheduling those for the last three Thursdays in October, starting at 1 o'clock.
All right, need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Still move.
Motion for seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. All right, next our agenda is Larry Hesser for some exonerations.
Good morning. I have, I think 13 on personal property, office property, office error we had to correct this past week. And the front page, basically, what you can read there, the key errors, that type of thing, there's eight of them, $771.66 on that first page, if you can't see that. Second page, we have five on there. Which the bottom three, I know you're gonna ask some questions on that, but those are the big three. I'm just gonna even get to them.
We're gonna have to ask Nick Deal for a refund.
Jim Gorb.
Yeah, it's always been a disconnect out there because these don't get recorded, you know, these are just contracts of sale. They're not these. We don't see them. And if we don't get them from the airport authority, like if we know that they sold a hangar or something, we don't know. And so it's.
These will be the, yeah, the purchase of hangars that the county now owns. So that's why the tax exonerations are on.
Yeah, right, yeah.
But there's also, there's also been a discussion on the ones that are owned by the individual plane owners, that as the years go, the value that they have in their hangar goes down. So their tax base should go down because every year that they rent for like a 20-year lease purchase, you might say, or that, I think it's after 25 years, that building. then becomes part of the airport's inventory. So every year, that, there should be a decrease in the taxing on that individual hangar that that person takes.
So they're leasing, they're leasing it with a, by the Airport Authority in 20 years.
I don't think, I don't think there's gonna be a decrease because you're saying that their ownership is less.
Yeah, because every year it goes less.
Ownership is 100% until that day that it switches over. So I don't think, I don't think you could, you're not gonna be able to argue the same thing if you sell somebody a piece of property on land contract there. The person that still owns the contract, owns the deed, is the one that's responsible for the taxes.
If you look at market rent, you can rent this for just as much in the beginning as you can at the end of 25-year lease. So it doesn't change the market rent on it. Now, the lease changes because at the end of 20 or 25 years, that building goes back to the Airport Authority. That's the way the lease is drawn up. And they know that when they build a building out there, it's not on their land. 25 years, they're gonna get rid of it.
I would think it would be just the opposite. I would think those buildings would increase in value, just like everything else does, over the 20 years that they own.
You can't take the value of a building that's comparable to another building and make it less valuable than you call it. That's just the agreement they made when they built the building out there. And, you know, you can't deduct the value from it. We'll look at income, it can rent this as much as any of the other property. And it's probably just as good shape as any of the others out there.
Or better.
Why would we put the lesser value on it? I understand that if you own one out there, if I wanna sell it, it's not gonna be worth much if you got two years left for the lease to live. Because if somebody buys it, they're gonna be able to use it for two years, that's it.
I guess.
Market value there would be down, but the actual rental value is the same. Kind of falls in between both of them.
Doesn't necessarily mean that there couldn't be a negotiation with the airport to increase that time either, you know? If somebody had five years left and wanted to sell the property and negotiate with the airport to do something where private individual for another 20 years or something, that can still happen.
So the airplane, the airplane hangars are considered personal property because the airport owns the real, the real estate, the raw land.
Same way with all, like Aerosmith buildings, Silence of the Birds, all of those are personal property.
And these are all the, these are the buildings they just bought under that last purchase.
Correct. Well, yes, these are.
Yeah.
And there should have been a big change to the Old Ralph Lauren building because that went from, that went from the airport owning the property to now, I believe Bowman owned it. Bowman bought it from Sam. Sam actually bought it, bought the property off of the Airport Authority, and he ended up owning the property and the building. So then the building should have been considered real estate at that point when he had the property. There's a whole chain that, I don't know if you guys even had that.
We can see that as a deed. We would take care of that. But these, we don't, if we don't actually go to the Airport Authority and talk to them and say, you know, you got anything that you've sold this or bought this year? There's nothing on record that comes to my office that shows us that there's a transfer. So either John needs to contact you guys, or you guys need to forward a copy of, I'd like to say, to my office, one way or the other, or it's just unconnected. We don't know it, you know?
Can you make that happen?
Yes, sir.
Once a year to have him contact them?
Yeah, John and I talked about it. In the past, we've done that. This just got missed this year. I don't know why it did, it's just got missed. And so, but there's no money being transferred. I mean, it's just a little paper. But they actually are still in those three, three deciders names because they own them John one last year. They still got their names on it. Airport Authority purchased some of these in March, I think, last year. But those are the big three that sometimes these happen. But we need to get together a little bit on that so we can make sure that doesn't happen again.
Well, Nick Deal will be in front of us later today, so I'll have fun with him when I ask him if we can get part of that $70,000 back there.
Who's that?
Nick Deal. From Airport Authority. So we'll have fun with him.
Good luck with that one. The total, the total, I didn't give you total yet, but the total of both of all, both pages is $70,855.76.
All right. Entertained a motion on the exoneration, 13 personal property tax exoneration due to Officer.
We're in, we're accepting exoneration, how many, 13?
13.
13 exonerations in the amount of $70,855.76.
I'll second that motion.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Board meeting reports, Mr. Barnard.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. We finally had the Telemont meeting yesterday. Sandy Hamilton is the President of the Telemont, whatever we're called. And several of the items were moved forward through November because they think they'll have a complete board in November. There are certain requirements of the low-income people to be put on the board, and I guess that will be completed by November. But the financials are strong, and that's about how the meeting went.
Okay. Mr. Delia.
My meetings were canceled yesterday, so apparently somebody forgot to post a notice.
All right. Mr. Whittaker.
I have no meetings to report.
Mr. Duncan.
Yes, sir. The sewer board met Tuesday evening. And the Timber Wolf project is near substantial completion, and approximately 16 out of the 45 customers there have disconnected. So they're going through a process. There really haven't been very many complaints issued, so according to their report, everything's going pretty well there. And they're also getting prices on doing a mapping of the entire county sewer system, which is, by the looks of things, huge. The Jerystown pump station, then we're gonna do the force main from the schools, from the Mountain Ridge schools up to Springdale subdivision. That project is slowing down because the back order of pipe cannot get the...
The pipe is going through the roof right now.
PVC, it's a special kind of pipe for force main. So that's, it's been slowed down. Plan and Commission, we had several public hearings the other night. Dunkin' Donuts, Tudor Biscuit, Anthony's Pizzas are a couple of that are coming to the inward area. But also Phase 3 of the Ridge Press subdivision came before us for action, and it was denied. Phase 3 approval was denied. There had been some progress made, and there was a stop work order, some along the line that was resolved. They moved forward. Now they've got another stop work order from either MS4 or West Virginia DEP. So they, you just gotta get this fixed out there. And Baker Heights Firehouse is, that project is going to be pushed back a little bit. The roofing contractor, they were not able to secure, so the general contractor is now be doing the roofing, which is gonna push them back a little bit further than what they intended.
What was that at?
Baker Heights Firehouse. That's about all I got going.
All right. And I have nothing to report on, so maybe we'll go on to any board and commission vacancies, any activity there? All right. I'm on there for councilperson issues, and I just wanted to take a formal vote. There's, the one thing that we've had Matt informally do was to contact the State Road and talk to him about left-hand turn, left-hand turn with a yellow caution arrow, like the state of Virginia does. And I think one of the prime areas to do this would be to do it on the, on the left-hand turn if you're heading west and you're making a left-hand turn into the commons. You know, I've seen, I've seen a lot of traffic back up on 81 there, especially during the holiday season because they can't get in that left-hand too late to make that left-hand turn. But a lot of times, there's very little traffic coming from the west, heading that way. And not saying that this would be the only spot, but this would be a start because Matt's response back from the Department of Transportation was, well, we don't do those in West Virginia because they're too confusing for the elderly population. And my response back to Matt is, I think a roundabout is much more confusing than a left-hand turn or a caution arrow. So...
So you're talking about a caution light or a flashing red light?
No, basically all it is is a, you know how you have your left turn in green? There'd be one underneath that with a yellow. And that yellow, so once, once you're able to, so other words...
Proceed with caution. But doesn't, doesn't that do the same thing if that red light flashes? That means you can...
It's, yeah, down in Virginia, it's a yellow, yellow arrow with the flash is yellow because the other people coming has the right of way.
Right.
But you can still make your left-hand turn here. Right now, you either have a green arrow to turn left, or you can't make your left. And it just allows you to stop, look, and turn. And I think it can work a lot, a lot of good things on that. And also, while we're talking about that, also want a formal letter. Matt, I know we asked for them to, I gave you direction to ask for a study done on the stoplights about being able to turn them on to, to flash after a certain error, right?
That's correct. I mean, the flashing red, is what I think you're talking about. Yeah, there was some additional discussion about that as well, asking whether they would consider unconditional lights.
Right, right.
They indicated that they had no additional plans to add any additional flashing signals.
Well, yeah, but that, that was...
Requested, added that into the request, we could do that.
Because legislation two years ago, or three years ago, gave us, said that they would, would give us the right to ask for a study. And those would come in handy at the off ramps of 81, for sure. I can, I can take a one at exit 14, trying to get out if you're heading north, that light lasts forever at nighttime. And if it, if it allows you to stop with a red flashing light, which I can't imagine that would take any additional lights, it'd just be a switch to turn them, just like they do when they lose their electric and all that stuff, and, and be able to make a left-hand turn after stop.
I just wanted to make the council aware that I did reach out to the mayor of Martinsburg and advised them before discussing the yellow flashing signal issue. And let them know that they were also interested in this. Just a point of clarification on the yellow flashing signal. This letter would be probably the first such request, formal request that has been received. The response with the O H was that they had not received a formal request for a flashing yellow arrow.
Left-hand turn.
Right. But, and, and so if I'm, I think I understand the whole concept correctly. I've been driving for a long time, so I should.
Well, maybe you're the reason why they don't wanna do it.
But if, if the, if it's flashing yellow, that means they don't have to stop. As long as it's clear coming on, they can continue on.
Correct.
But the flashing red, they could probably do with what they have there, just put that mode. That would mean that they could continue on, but they had to stop first.
Yeah, all directions.
No, 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 I mean, just the turn light. You could make just the turn light flash red when it goes red, and instead of, instead of stopping the traffic, it could flash red, which would give them an option to stop first, make sure the lane's clear, and then proceed forward. As opposed to if you have the yellow means that you can just proceed forward without stopping.
You're better off to do it yellow. Caution. Make your left-hand turn with caution. Don't make it confusing because the state of Virginia is yellow.
Yeah, I think a flashing red light...
Flashing red light would tell me, don't make the, don't make your turn.
I don't know if we really wanna file the state of Virginia or not, but...
I will say, just from the, I will say that the flashing yellow signal has been adopted by many states across the country. There's research out there that indicates that West Virginia is one of only a few that have not. I did do some research about that. I can give you that information.
So, so you're saying it's not been adopted by the state?
Of West Virginia, correct.
So then it's probably not an option anyway.
No request has been submitted.
Right.
No formal request.
No formal request has been submitted.
But we're getting ready to give one.
Okay.
You know, we're always, we're always one of the first ones. So, like, we've had enough discussion. So is it all right if I sign a letter on behalf of the county to ask them to do this request on the yellow left-hand turn after caution?
Do we need a motion?
I do need a motion to give me authority to sign the letter.
Well, I'll give you authority to sign the letter.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. And do we need another motion for the, for the study of the flashing lights?
It would be a separate.
Right.
It would be a separate flash.
Right. And I know Blair's the one that sponsored that bill.
I believe that was presented by him.
I know, yeah, yeah.
And he's asked me several times why we haven't requested.
Well, we've talked about it, so entertain a motion to send a letter out authorizing the president to sign on behalf of the council for a study for lights to flash after a certain time.
So move.
All right, have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Sir.
I was gonna say.
It's for a study, correct?
Yes.
So, so they actually, so I, and, and when that bill passed a few years ago, I thought it was actually a request to make it happen, but it's not. It's a request for them to do a study?
It, it...
Form a committee?
It allows us to ask the Department of Transportation to formally do a study, and more than likely, I would say they would try it and see that works.
Do they have a fee for this study that we have to pay?
I'm only asking for the, for the study. I'm not asking for money.
No, I mean, are they gonna ask for money? That's my point. If we ask for a study, if you ask for a study on, on a road, it's like $40,000 to have a traffic study done. So if, is there a fee?
A study, a study without cost. How's that, Mr. Delia?
A number of years ago, delegate Larry B. Faircliff had requested through legislation about the very thing you're speaking about. It was in particular about the stoplight in front of the Musson High School nearly 20 years ago. But it, I know it did not get through the legislature, but you're sitting there at 2 o'clock in the morning with absolutely no cars in sight whatsoever.
Didn't make a whole lot of sense.
Makes no sense. I mean, you're sitting there sometimes for five to seven minutes. It's crazy. All right, so a modified motion to ask the Department of Transportation to do a study at no cost to the county council.
Sir.
Who made the motion?
I made the motion.
All right. Second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Homestead. Next on our agenda is Barbara Frankenberry, Shenandoah Valley Chapter of National Society, Daughters of American Revolution, Proclamation of U.S. Constitution Week. Ms. Frankenberry, it's always great to see you.
She got so excited she dropped her phone. It's always nice to be here with you all. I feel like Groundhog Day. You all know the movie Groundhog Day? Over and over. And I don't even know how many... And I don't even know how many years I have been here, but Penny and I have communicated quite a few years, haven't we Penny and I? It's nice to see so many of you and to see some new faces on the council. Makes us very happy ourselves then, to see something like that in any ways, Mr. Baker. So, this marks the two-hundred-and-thirty-fourth anniversary. Wow. Think about it. How old were you when we celebrated the two-hundredth anniversary of it?
I was still young.
You were young then.
I was.
Well, same here.
I'm much older then.
I was younger, but I still had white hair.
This document is laid here in front of me, and I guess you want it read.
Absolutely.
Because why do we do this every year? Why do we recognize our constitution every year? Remember, I was an educator, I still am, but for forty-four years, I was amongst those young people out there. But why do we?
Make sure everybody remembers what it's all about.
That's right. That's exactly right.
And keep it in the frontal lobe or it goes away.
That's exactly right. And soon we will recognize two-hundred-and-fifty years of it. How many years?
Two fifty.
But how many years is it until two fifty? Come on.
Sixteen.
Ten people. Pardon?
Sixteen.
Very good.
We'll be very old.
You get a, you get a prize. No prizes today. No, no, um-
No cash prize?
No Chinese fortune cookie.
Give us one of those stars if you were.
Pardon?
We'd give us one of those blue stars if you go for sure.
I worked so hard. I worked so hard for that answer, too.
Pardon?
I worked so hard for that answer.
I'm sure you did.
We'll give you an attaboy.
But I'm, I'm sure your math teacher is very, very happy if he or she is still alive. So...
You're trying to say I'm old?
Our document. Wow.
My teacher's already living now? Oh, my gosh.
Our document reads, "The Berkeley County Council and the Shenandoah Valley Chapter, National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution. Whereas, the National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, sponsors September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week each year. And whereas, September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, marks the two-hundred-and-thirty-fourth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Continental Congress. And whereas, it is fitting and proper to afford official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebration which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas, public law, nine fifteen guarantees the issue, issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now therefore, it is proclaimed that the Berkeley County Council, Martinsburg, West Virginia, and the Shenandoah Valley Chapter, N S D A R, hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution that they had in seventeen eighty-seven by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. And of course, it will be signed by all of you gentlemen. So we thank you each year for allowing us to come and put that gentle reminder in your mind and everybody else who's here today. Of course, our Shenandoah Valley Chapter members are, are here with us, and I would like to recognize them. Our regent is Margie Ways. We have Kathleen Curio, Alice Cogo, Deanna Kay, and Tina Marquardt. Marquardt, Marquardt. And they are with us today to celebrate this. But if we might, before we take a picture, we have one more little, I guess, reminder about something that happened twenty years ago. You know, we have people ask us, "What were you doing twenty years ago on September the eleventh?" And I bet each one of you has the picture in your mind right now. Are you, everybody? You've got it. That's because we're old.
Older.
Older. Because we're over twenty years old. I'll put it that way.
Yeah.
All right? But as we commemorate that day on Saturday, we, the Shenandoah Valley Chapter members decided, "How are you going to commemorate that day? What will you do to make it special?" I've been watching on the news. A special program was on last night, the Women of Nine Eleven. It was magnificent. ABC, if you have a chance, YouTube, it was incredible. I saw footage I've never seen before and heard stories I've never heard before. So we have some suggestions of something you might do to commemorate. Now notice, I'm not celebrating, but I'm commemorating. So I have some helpers with me, and I'll start. One thing you might do is a random act of kindness. What could you do? Could you maybe mow the lawn of somebody whose husband's had a stroke? I'm kidding. I mowed yesterday. Um, what else could you do? What else? Because I knew it was supposed to rain today. What else could you do? Ladies, can you help me? Tell me one. I can't hear you.
Wear red, white, and blue.
Tina, you have one?
I have a first responder.
Oh, last night, the first responders. And do you remember? Do you remember that day? I bet you pulled out your flag pin, didn't you? If you didn't have one, you flew your American flag. They could not keep flag pins in the stores. They couldn't keep any memory of real, anything that had, "There we go, wear an American pin." And Kathy, what do you have?
Say a prayer.
Say a prayer for all those that perished. This morning, on the Today Show, there were two daughters. One is thirty now, and the other one is about twenty-seven, she said. Their dads died. And you know, they were afraid to talk about it. But they actually have a camp for those young people who lost their parents. And they said it really helped. And they were on there and Jenna Bush Hager said, "What's the one thing you want people to know about your dads that they'll always be remembered? Whether it's by them or by us collectively, we must remember." And that constitution that you're going to sign, that proclamation, that gives us that right to remember each year, to celebrate it, and to be thankful that we have people who rushed and gave, gave their lives to save many others. So let's don't ever forget, ever. And thank you for letting, whether I gave, whether you gave me permission or not, to do our little segment. But can you think of something else you could do?
What were you doing when you first heard what happened?
I had, it was a day of caring, and I had taken students to the Red Cross. Oh, that for great. I was at the Red Cross building. We were cleaning out their storage area, washing their van. Two of the students, well, actually, well, one of the student's dad was out at the airbar. And of course, so was my husband. And his mother was at the Red Cross. And of course, she was frantic, trying to get through to her husband. And of course, she tells her husband when she gets through that I want to talk to my husband. Well, I knew he didn't want to talk to me. There was stuff going on. But that's where I was that day, at the Red Cross. So guess what? When that first plane hit, they, they keep their TV on, and the one lady came to me and she says, "Come here, bring your students." I, so we did. So we're watching all this unfold. And lo and behold, here comes the next plane. And last night, they showed that footage again, and I looked at Bob and I said, "I saw that, I saw that live, Bob. I really did. What an impact. I mean, really, what an impact. Did all of you all have your TVs on by then? I mean, those of you who might have been at home? It, it was incredible. You guys that may have been out on a job, maybe didn't want-
I was framing, I was framing the townhouses down here. I was framing the townhouses and seeing, seeing Marine One with several other helicopters coming into Martinsburg Airport. And I was like, wow, that's really strange. Real low, real fast. And I left there to go to Ralph Akinridge to adjust my insurance, and he had it on the TV what was going on. That's when I found out.
It, it was a day to vote President Roosevelt that will live in infamy. Because it was, obviously, I wasn't alive when they bombed Pearl Harbor. I know you find that hard to believe because I've been here so many years. But it, it really, it's, it's ingrained in my mind. And as long as I can laugh and talk and think right, I will share so that others won't forget what has happened. And I know that many of you here feel the same way. And that's what makes us good caring Americans.
I think, I think with what happened on September eleventh twenty years ago is another strong reason why the Second Amendment has got to be strong. You know, if, if they can invade our airspace, we need to be able to protect ourselves, and, and it's a very important part.
That's why we have a strong military, and we look, look to them to take care of us. And I think that's very important, very. Okay, thank you so much.
All right.
May we, may we get a picture?
Yeah.
Please?
Give, give a second.
We look forward to this each year.
Surprised if you want to take a break now?
Well, wait a second. We need to take, take a vote on, need a motion to adopt the proclamation of the, for the U.S. Constitution.
Start moving.
Second.
All right, have a motion, second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
I was gonna say, please don't turn me down after all.
All right, we'll take a quick break for photos. All right. We're back in session. Next on our agenda is Mr. Davis for DEP Air Quality Testing Site Agreement. And we're new.
Yes, sir. Since February 1999, West Virginia DEP has actually had a air quality testing site to the northeast side of the old vehicle compound down in 802 Emmett Rouse Drive. It's a parcel about 900 square feet in size. If you'll remember five years ago when we renewed the lease, up until that time, we were responsible for maintenance of ingress and egress as well as the site. And they had, they fussled a little bit about the fact that we worked up there as often as they thought we should be.
So we took care of that.
To most, so we took care of it. We amended the contract that said, number one, you've got the wrong address on it. They had 802 South Queen Street. And number two, we're not maintaining it anymore. If you want it, you're going to maintain it. And so you'll see the current contract, and I highlighted the changes that were made, that it is a 900 square foot parcel, more or less complicated, located near 802 Emmett Rouse Drive. And whereas both parties agree that since the lessor does not use the piece of land in right of way, that any maintenance to the right of way for ingress and egress is the responsibility that we seek. So it has been, there have not been any issues over the past five years. In fact, I was a little surprised when the, the lease real estate representative from the, from DEP contacted us and said that the current lease is due to expire on January 31st of 2022. So I'm here asking you whether, and they're requesting a five-year extension of the lease through January 31st, 2027. Just here asking you whether you want to continue the lease with West Virginia DEP. If so, I will work with these folks and get you to be an addendum now and present it to the council.
I can remember this conversation five years ago. The, I don't have a problem with the lease, I do have a problem with site. The site that is chosen almost feel, it makes me believe that it's more to monitor the air quality of the quarry than it is anything else. I mean, that's the exact direct path the air flows all the time. And which hurts our air quality as a countywide. That's the only reason, that's the only thing I have. I've always had a problem with that.
I'd say probably the location is, as a result of the many complaints from the neighborhoods off Wilson Street, that whole general area.
I agree.
Of the quarry, which.
But looks to me, and it always made me feel like that the air quality and for the whole county is being measured from a troubled area.
Yes. And where you would think you would put it in the middle, middle of the county to get a wide range.
Right, right.
Or have multiple and do an average of, to get the air quality and, and use each one to determine where there's an issue, how to resolve the issue, not, not use it as data for the entire county.
Why don't we talk to them about that? Why don't we talk to them about doing multiple sites? stations, sites?
Plenty of time. We have for four months.
I mean, it'd be nice to do one, you know, two to the west, one northwest, one southwest, and one southeast and southwest.
I know, on top of north.
Southeast and northeast.
Well, we asked the commander.
There you go. Have him come in. Have a conversation. And what drives them to have it there?
Maybe provide us with reports for the rest.
Well, yeah, I was, I mean, we should have those reports.
Well, you know, Matt Pennington, I've worked with him. He's always referenced those at times.
Right. But I mean, multiple sites, or even a better site would really help the county.
His replacement starts work tomorrow.
All right, good.
Got to schedule time for closing commitment.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda is Gary Wine, Deputy County Administrator of Vehicle Purchases. Back again.
There are three additions. So in the past year, we've had some accidents, some incidents, some growth. So we've got, we've identified opportunities for five vehicles. I laid them out here. I'll just review them generally. One was an incident with a deer in home confinement steel facility, driving oh six Durango. I mean, you might fact on eleven north, somewhere right in there, met a deer and towed that vehicle, totally lost, we received a small.
I was gonna say, it didn't take much to try to total it.
No, no. And then you have a new home confinement officer that started July one. We've moved some vehicles around, and there's a big void for them to use the chairs. So they're functional, but they need, and that person's not ready to hit the street yet, but it's close. People remember, it's been probably six months ago, relinquished the Jeep that I had. It was when they used it for part of air changes over there. It was a void. I still haven't started using the transport for the trip vehicle, which was expedition. My intent is to kind of grow it back into that role. People need to use it. It has some service.
And that's actually used more than you'd think.
More than you would think. More than you would think. And it's from engineering to home confinement to anybody who gives the training, they come. I just give them a way back to move on. We had an incident on eighty-one, I think it's about four weeks ago, an interceptor in a hydro, a twenty eighteen interceptor hydro. We don't have the official total yet. Trust me when I tell you, it's terrible. And then the last one is your change at emergency services with the fire chief, the emergency manager, and Randy is the manager. You're short a vehicle down there. So Eddie, the chief, used to drive an eighteen pickup truck, a Ford. Randy drove oh six Durango with very low miles. So it's migrated from nine to one, which is still a good vehicle. That leaves a void down there. They're only flexible vehicle. They have a big F two fifty that's used to pull their boat stuff. So they're uncomfortable getting off, being available for the hazmat or the boat team in the event they get caught. So Dave asking how to deal with it. So there's three replacements and two additions here if the council sees fit.
Eddie, you just, before you retired from being the chief, you had a brand new truck that was done.
Yes.
And that's what Randy has now?
The new chief will grab you.
Okay.
The Randy's replacement as emergency manager is driving Randy's old Durango.
And that's the one you're looking to replace?
Looking, so they only have two vehicles assigned down there for use. So you have those two vehicles. Randy's position that he has now is directed, there was never a position, and isn't a vehicle. And he's part of your twenty-four seven response as a manager. So a take-home is warranted.
Right.
So we're gonna get him, and I'm not a brand new, we're gonna get a small SUV, almost like an Explorer, about similar to what you got with Jerry.
So really, this request is just that you bless the effort to put numbers to it. We have to bid it a course and get him in. We'll come back with final numbers. And I spoke with Alan, and his intent is to purchase, not find ones.
Purchase, right.
Right. So this is really just your group one answering the question you had about those.
What's the availability of the vehicles?
Well, availability right now, you can buy off a state contract if it's on the lot down there. But we've never done that because we find that low, going out to bid low, we get better prices. I guess it is not. The only real problem is with home confinement and what we may have, I may have to sacrifice what I'm having so that they can have a honest job on the vehicle.
Well, if you notice, around the city of Martinsburg, there's all these scooters parked. You just grab a scooter.
Can you see me going over the middle of the ground, halfway up, right?
Put farm tags on them.
We don't specify Ford or Chevrolet or Dodge. So we don't know. And we've dealt with such a wide variety of dealers this far, more of this Harrisburg, which is the last third vehicle we've shared.
Central highway. We had a driver out of central highway.
So, you know.
Yeah, to the local ones, I always bet, didn't bet.
We've got a pretty good network. So we'll, these aren't, you know, we're not looking like police interceptor during that.
Just one, you would be the replacement to the twenty eighteen Durango or shoot Explorer. And they had requested an interceptor truck. They'd like to have a truck for that replacement up there. Costs is, I don't know, the cost is about the same, but they don't want an SUV or a truck.
You can get by, you can do pretty good with a truck, especially to shout it out on interstate. They'd never look for a truck.
Right. And Ford literally makes an interceptor truck.
Is that right?
That's a nice looking vehicle.
Yeah, and those.
They make those trucks very nice. But I mean, sooner or later, those F O R D owners switch over to GMC or Dodge. And they, and they say, man, this is nice.
Four years ago, but you're right. We switched.
Somebody else is getting ready to switch too. All right. Need a motion to move forward with the advertisement of five replace, or five vehicles, replacement and new.
A move.
Motion been made and seconded and discussion. If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is Mr. Deal gonna be here?
Yes.
It's already scheduled.
All right.
Can you call Tim and see if he can come over?
Tim.
Should we send Nick a message that we're running?
Wasn't.
Should we send Nick a message that we're running ahead of time?
No, he's late.
He's late.
Yeah.
I don't know why. I was thinking eleven forty-five.
Might as well shut us down, take a break, till somebody shows up. All right, we're back in session. Next on our agenda is Nick Deal, Executive Director, Eastern West Virginia Regional Airport, jointly funded city-county fireworks display July twenty twenty-two. Nick, you and Mr. Homestead have been working on trying to organize this, this event and stuff. So tell us a little bit about what you're thinking.
Well, we, when I started talking to you about it, we, I said, we got plenty of property out there, and we happen to be a little bit of a null. So I think that if we can get a large enough fireworks display, you'll see it from not just in that vicinity, but all over the county. So been talking to a couple different fireworks groups and have a pretty good idea of what we're gonna need to get the height to the place where you can see it in town. Has some general ideas on cost. But again, that's subject to change a little bit. It's pretty close, I think. And so we would be happy to to host it. We can do the, some of the ground prep. We also got a couple of pretty large fields there. It will be outside of the range that has to be contained for the fireworks, but close enough that you can have a really good view of them. And we're happy to get those mowed down and prepped if the county would like to use that area.
So we're looking to set them off at the airport. We're also looking to be able to have people to come to view the fireworks at the airport. And I know we've talked, or at least I've thought about it, is is making it an all-day event and to kind of also get people familiar that the airport's there and everything.
Plus, it's their two hundred fiftieth.
That's, that's, yeah, that's even more of a reason.
Together.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think we've got the, we certainly have the facility to do that.
Mm-hmm. And, and the guard's okay with it?
Well, we have let them know that we were intending on doing that. And we'll have to go through some, some checks. They're not, they'll, we'll have a meeting with them ahead of time, just to make sure everybody's on the same page for things like after fireworks are finished, we'll have to get some guard guys like me and some folks from the airport to go sweep the field and make sure that no degree on the, your taxi pay.
Right. Okay.
It's a tough process to have some entertainment, some, maybe even some, something aeronautical. I mean, I've seen, what's, what's the guy that, that flies the flying circus plane or whatever?
Oh, we could actually work on something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I hadn't really gone down that road yet. It's, if we're gonna do something that's gonna be, have an aromatic flying event, that's a lot, lot more complex than. But we should have some aircraft.
Yeah, I'm not talking like a big event, but just have something going on to be able to have. I mean, if you're gonna create an all-day event, you're gonna have to have different things to happen. You know, maybe some live music or some food vendors.
Yeah, live music.
That's what we could do. Plane ride, helicopter events, you know, for somebody wants to come out and do.
Yep. We can certainly do a lot of that. We're on.
That's different than an airshow.
Right.
You know, just giving rides.
Yeah, like as a time of the helicopter dropped in your yard.
Mm-hmm. Sky soldiers.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So we can definitely try to work out some of that. I mean, as I was, when I was talking to Matt, I said, the only thing, at least right now, that if the county council chooses to go with this concept and support it, is that once we get a fireworks company nailed down, if they need some sort of deposit or something, I just want to make sure that the, if you do this partnership with the city, which the city has expressed a willingness to do, that there be a guarantee from the city and the county that all else fails. And I don't think that's gonna happen. But if you don't get any other sponsorships or anything, that I know you all will, you and the city will cover the cost of the fireworks, the direct expenses.
The biggest thing is to get the fireworks company under contract.
Correct.
Absolutely, yeah.
And the longer we wait, the less, the less bad rally people have.
And we're, yeah, I'm not comfortable giving the air board for that, if we don't know for sure when we sign that contract, that the city and the county here.
Why don't we just go ahead and set a budget right now, what we'd be willing to go up to? Because that's all part of the planning process.
Well, and we had talked about setting aside some funding for the two hundred fiftieth celebration.
Right.
You know, some challenge points and, you know, promotional issues. So I think this certainly falls within.
So why don't we, why don't we do this? I mean, why don't we, why don't we commit today up to thirty thousand dollars of accounting for the celebration of the Fourth of July and our two hundred fiftieth anniversary, thirty thousand dollars total. And then, you know, you can go to the city of Martinsburg and ask them to contribute to, to the cost too. And then now, now you have a budget to work within.
Right.
And then we also will, will look at some corporate sponsors as well.
Right. And we can probably take some of that down, get some sponsorships.
Or we can take the seventy-some thousand dollars, we just exonerate it in taxes for you, and just you pay for them.
I appreciate it.
The big fireworks display that's done in New York every Fourth of July is sponsored by Macy's.
I know.
So who knows?
Right. I mean, we, we have some very nice companies here in Berkeley County right now.
And they always have an orchestra that plays along. Not that we have an orchestra, but maybe some sort of venue of music to go along with the display.
Yeah, no, I think that would be very, very nice. Actually, the one company I talked to was the one that does that. So they said, I said, they said, what's your budget? And I said, what can you do? And they said, we can do anything from a very, very small show for ten thousand dollars, or our market shows, one of the two million. I was like, hmm, probably somewhere in the middle.
Someone as close as that ten thousand dollar right there. Bill sitting in the back going like this, oh, that goes my building. But, yeah, I think, and, and, you know, it's been quite a few years. And, and gotta say, the city of Martinsburg done it all on their own for many, many years at War Memorial. So it'd be nice to, if we can partner up if that's, if that becomes reality. And, but I'm, I'm like them. I, I'd like to see it as an all-day event, maybe, you know, have bands or, you know, several bands to play in an hour and a half gig. So what, maybe six hour music and stuff like that.
Yep. We could definitely do that. And I think that you get some other, some other businesses that are on the field that are gonna be excited about this.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. All right. So I'm gonna make a motion to, to allocate thirty thousand dollars towards the celebration and up to thirty thousand dollars.
So I move.
Motion been made and seconded and discussion. If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Mr. Homestead, you have anything to add?
No, not at the moment.
Okay. All right. There you go.
Thank you very much.
So you got a hundred thousand dollar amount of money today.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I will be back in several months.
All right. All right. Next on our agenda is a general discussion with the COVID update. We have Bill Kearns, Executive Director of Berkeley, slash, Morgan County Health Department, Brian Costello, Executive Director of Burke County Emergency Ambulance Authority. To give us an oversight of what they're seeing and, and, and just a general update. So Mr. Kearns, you wanna go first for us?
Thank you for inviting me. Wish I always had a better topic to talk about. COVID is, COVID is our life now. So we are seeing still a huge uptick of cases. Hospitals full of people, beds aren't available. Saw yesterday, the governor said twenty-two thousand people currently in West Virginia with COVID. The Delta variant is the most highly spread one right now that we're seeing. Our, and we're seeing, we're using our, we have our contact tracers that we've hired to be able to call these people, but we're limited in what we can do. The state is actually working on providing that we basically contact people that's in a household, but there's no way to contact everybody within their family and everybody that's outside of that immediate household.
Give, give us a little, tell us, you say there's twenty-two thousand people currently in West Virginia that's testing positive.
Forty-six.
Where, where were we six months ago? How many people about?
Um, well, it's, it's better to kind of give you an idea of August, because that was our most recent complete month. Last year, two thousand twenty, in August, we had a hundred fifty-one people. And in August of this past, of this year, we had over thirteen hundred people.
Okay.
Compared to two years.
Uh-huh.
Best comparison I can give. We continue to be seeing new people identified every day. There's lots of testing sites that are available within our county. Every Monday through Friday, basically. Some days, we have two and three different sites, four different sites, urgent cares that are going testing. They're all seeing positives being identified as we did. It's, it's Delta variant is very strong, and it's even hitting the people that have been vaccinated. You're seeing a three to seven percent possibility, even if you're vaccinated, that maybe it's weed open up that you're still gonna get. But your symptoms may be a lot less, which is what we're hoping for. So we, we are now in our next phase that we know we're, we're vaccinating people that are high risk, that have active cancers, autoimmune disorders. We're able to give that third dose to boost their.
So you already have the booster shot?
We're not, those aren't necessarily the boosters. Those are a third additional shot for those people qualified. Many people do call it booster.
So it's almost an annual shot then?
That kind of, that's what we do with H one. That kind of, that's what we do with H1N1. Um, we had to give it that shot for the first year that came was exposed. Now every year when you get a flu shot, it rolls right into that vaccine. Not sure that it's going to be able to say anything with COVID, um, but it's possible. So we are, we're vaccinating those people two days a week here in Berkeley County Health Department and then in Morgan County, we're doing them as a need basis, but it could be every day if you have the need. But we are also having to gear up because we know that CDC is going to release that release that booster, which we think it'll be for a certain age group, 65 and above,
Right.
First responders, nursing home. We know that that that's going to be released at some point. We were thinking it was going to be around the 20th of this month here. Yesterday, I think it's going to be a little bit later. We don't know exact date, but we know to some extent that's going to draw upon the resources of the health department to be able to administer those.
And and your your staff is just now was just now being able to breathe a little bit.
Yeah, summer's over and our little reprieve that we did have is over with. So back comes the overtime, back comes the, uh, the hostility that the community has for health departments with masks or whatever. So you've probably seen, we actually have a state trooper vehicle station down in the health department. We've had to call law enforcement from the city, phone threats, things of that nature. But we know that we're going to have to gear up most likely for some kind of community based clinics. And we, what we don't want is we don't have to, you know, have to go out of the county again with the governor's initiative for. We had to, as you remember, we had to get up to the racetrack and do a regional approach. We don't want that. So we've, unless we're mandated, we've already had some ideas that we ran for our partnership team. And right now, our plans are going to be that we're going to do our community clinics based on coming days we could do it. At the Airborne Church, Pastor Green has been very gracious enough to offer up his church for us to be able to use that for a community based clinic and actually provide help and 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 lots of resources there. So we're going to be going in site visit, uh, next week and kind of look at and kind of lay it out for the IT and everything. But that's kind of where we're going to look at having a community based clinic. And then we also, of course, have the the Parks and Rec Center that offered up. Uh, there's a little bit more tighter straits on that because it's fully functional now. It's not like the Parks and Rec is closed down.
Right.
So it's a little bit tighter timeframe and we can use that. But Pastor Green was very gracious about offering up their church. But the problem we have is is staffing to be able to to operate one of these clinics right now. Uh, we still have a large number of staff I need to be able to hire. I just can't find them to hire nurses mainly. We've had that two nurse positions open for a couple of years.
There's a lot of nurses that's actually leaving their position, that's for sure.
Yes.
At the hospitals.
And 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 be able to afford that position. Um, nurses have a high salary, comes along with their positions. Now, we're tied to civil service, so we can only pay so much. But in in clerical staff and the rest of our support staff, we're we're kind of low on. So and and the hospital is so overwhelmed right now that they may not have the staff to be able to send out and help us with our community based clinic like they did previously. We don't know. But we're having a plan for what we do have. So when we're looking, we can say with our staff, um, and we could probably do 450 people a day when we get to that point for it. So we are doing the planning process every week. We're on a call with all the partners, law enforcement, EMS and and the hospital. And we're all talking every week, trying to get plans in place. We don't know when this is going to happen, but we know it will happen at some point. But we're also right at the beginning stages of influenza vaccination season. So it's going to hit us all at once. So, yeah, we can try to do some things, uh, at the same time, but for the most part, we're going to have to stagger those clinics out. So we're going to be doing flu vaccinations, coming to the county and getting urals done and other places, senior places that we do every year. And also do those in house, but then also try to mix in with that with.
And Bill and I did have a conversation a couple of weeks ago about our flu clinic. And I asked him at that time to, as he begins to work on the calendar, get us on the schedule, assuming that the council would want to do it again this year. And you said there was no changes.
No change from last year.
Um, yeah, and they work with us and they build the insurance company, correct? So the the actual out of pocket expenses to us has been very vital. Um, we'd like to have the council's, if by consensus, the agreement that we will do a flu shot clinic for your employees.
Yeah, we've done that.
What what are the, um, do you know what the locally, what the the death rate from this is?
Well, and there's two things there. You can do death rate of the people that by the population of the whole state, or you can do death rate of the people that tested positive.
And I'm looking at something from the New York Times where they put out, I don't know if you've ever seen this, where they have the whole country and do it by county and all of that. And and I don't know how accurate their numbers are, but their numbers are, um, saying that we're just under 15,000 since the onset of this till now, what, 18 months? Um, that, uh, we're just under 15,000 people that have tested positive, um, at this point. And it says that there's a death rate of 149 people in Berkeley County.
Could be, um, our epidemiologist tracks that.
Which is what, 1%?
Right. And clearly, you know, speaking of Tuesday, we we can get an updated count from the hospitals, how people are, with COVID that are hospitalized, how many people are in ICU, how many are on bed lakers. They're 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 keeping with that, you know, the majority of those, 97 to 95% of those people that are being hospitalized on bed lakers and ICU are unvaccinated. So it's just, there are statistics there. I mean, with three to 5% is still, you know, breakthroughs that we nobody can see, but the majority of those are all unvaccinated people.
So so when I heard you talk about the boosters, that the booster's not even available?
They're not. They're CDC has not released those. Uh, we listen to the governor three times a week because that's kind of how we get our marching orders as well. We don't get any or warning. So we listen and and what he's going to announce. And right now, he wants to be able to provide it out to those, you know, 65 and older or high risk first responders, but it's not been released, so we can't do it. It's very, it we have very strong restrictions on who we can and cannot give that vaccine to right now as a third dose.
So that's nationwide?
Right now, they're coming, I think they're making them available for 65 and old.
I did hear that from Maryland, I believe. The governor said they were, he was tired of waiting for it to be released. So he was going to
The governor Hogan made the executive decision yesterday that
65 and above of the ground because they're they're considered higher risk and will have immune disorders.
And they have to wait till like six months after the
Eight months.
Eight months.
Eight months from your eight months from your second dose. And right now, the only one we know has been, that's been released to be able to do that is Pfizer. But they're saying no matter when you had Moderna initially, you can get evening down, you get no authorized, or you have Pfizer for that, that third dose. But right now, that's the only one that's been released. So again, we have people who are still coming in for first or second doses that started the series, but then we're having some for third dose as well. Takes a little bit of a toll. So Doug was talking a lot about the our building expansion. Yeah, we're trying to do a little social distancing and everything. We, uh, we have that that plate after you get that vaccination, it's a little tight in the building. So we we have, we schedule people accordingly.
So if you're going to get, if you're going to get the booster, does it have to be from the same, um, if you're going to get the Pfizer booster, does it have to be, you have to have had the Pfizer initial?
Right now, no, no. But right now, the only one who can get that, it's going to be Pfizer, because that's the only one that's been released.
Okay. You understand what I'm saying?
I do, I do. And they're saying now that both can be interchanged.
Okay.
But in Berkeley County, we've actually, except when we were doing the, uh, community or the joint clinic, uh, with Berkeley County, all we ever received was Pfizer. What we received Moderna for worry, but we received Pfizer.
Right. How much COVID is in the juvenile population, do you have?
I don't. We're just trying to keep our staff good and safe. So we, you know, we have our doors locked, we have a doorbell ring for environmental and ring one for clinical side, uh, just try to keep everybody safe as much as possible. It's working fairly well. Except for the people that called, they're not happy about face masks. But that's another story and another discussion.
We have, I have received several comments since I said it in the meeting that I hadn't received comments about people that were in favor of wearing face masks. So I have received several comments about that as well now.
We, uh, we just ask people to, uh, be patient with us and not take their handout on my staff, on my nurses and on my clerks. They're relaying orders as they've been given. They're not the ones that's making the orders or the recommendations or the whatever, but that doesn't necessarily help. So they're the ones answering.
Yeah, and we 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 get nasty emails and everything of that nature and phone calls and stuff too. Um, and no different. I mean, you know, we've been given a task to make a decision if that's, you know, by legislators and that's fine. We'll do it, you know? Um, and I would just run some math numbers. If my math is, the mind is working correctly and 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 from the state, from 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 day one, um, there've been 201,660 total cases, 3,169 deaths, and that that's as of yesterday. Um, but that's been going on for, uh, what, over a year and a half now, right? Um, so they almost have to do, but if you just done it, if it's going for a year, that means one person out of 568 people in West Virginia has passed as being listed as a COVID death. Now, we've had conversations about this and that, you know, how do we actually classify a COVID death, you know? And that's the thing that gets people upset too is, you know, you know, so we we always feel that the numbers are are have been messed with. Um, but let's say if it's one year, one person out of 568 people. So it's a little bit bigger number than what I would have anticipated. But I I think a lot of those are preexisting conditions and
And and COVID has kind of exacerbated that and made it worse.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
You may have had COPD or other chronic
Cancer.
And 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 cancer and cardiac issues.
Right.
Hospitalized and because of COVID, it made it worse.
Sure.
It's a combination of COVID and your previous type of case.
Yeah, I I just wish that the the federal government, the state government would have classified them a little differently. Was it, because very seldom do you ha, and maybe I'm wrong, very seldom do you have a death from a healthy person. Very seldom, right?
Can't happen, yes.
All right, um, so you you briefly talked about the hospital bed being full.
And there's a good wait even when you get in the hospital. I heard what it is as of today, but usually there's a wait to get into their ED, their beds are full. I'm sure we'll have to talk more about that. But, um, it's it's a lot of COVID patients, you know, were, um, worse than we were this time last year for sure.
Mm hmm.
And, um, and we're not at the point where we're getting everybody's, the colder months come and we get everybody more confined inside, it's going to potentially get worse. So we're going to have to plan for that. But, um, like everything else, even more or less, actually, we follow up what the governor declared and what we have to do. But, uh, right now, there've been no further decisions on any restrictions or anything of that nature. So right now, we're just trying to get plans in place. We told we need to go and start vaccinating the community for these booster when they're released, that we can have some plans in place.
Okay, anybody have any questions from Bill?
Do you know, were you going to say something? Go ahead. Wait, do you know more specific, when you say the beds are full, what does that mean? Does it mean that there's
ICU beds?
No, I mean, how how many beds? Do we know how many beds are available in our local hospital? How many?
Right.
We usually get an update from, um, Tommy Grub or 1012 Hospital that calls. He wasn't on there in an emergency this, this, and this Tuesday this week, so he wasn't on there.
I I specifically. We, when we, when we spoke of, uh, we we had this meeting, Eddie was in, Eddie and I, I think Eddie called a meeting to talk about it and I had asked those those that information then, um, to try. I I'd really like to know that information, if at all, you you have accessibility to get that information.
We can tell you where they are. I'll tell you where they are today.
Okay, thank you.
Just one real quick thing before Bill steps away, um, kind of an aside, your grant department applied for community, uh, West Virginia Community Development Block grant to assist with the expansion of health department. Um, we did receive $608,802, uh, from the state of West Virginia bricks and mortar to assist in the expansion of the health department. So, um, we're very thankful to Governor Justice of the state for for that, or that will help out quite a bit. Um, and we will actually, two weeks from today, in the afternoon, begin with his, uh, discussion with the doctor that that is going to be very important to the council.
And adjust my schedule as necessary.
That's good news.
And 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 when I got awarded the grant, um, I failed to, and I I thought Bill was on there, but it didn't pop up on my screen on who all was there. And Governor Justice didn't, um, didn't call upon Bill to to say anything. But, you know, one of the things that Bill was going to say, and I should have said, was about the partnership that we have with our local health department, you know, it's a, it's a another great partnership and got started in the hallways here.
Absolutely.
Right? And, uh, so, uh, sad to say from a spending, uh, viewpoint, um, you know, when you, when you went from here and you went down, well, I guess when you went from the health department down there and came here, right? Um, you had about 3,000 square feet down there, uh, and your new facility is over 7,000 square feet, right? So they more than doubled their space, but yet in five years, I believe it's been about five years now, they've already grown, outgrown that, naturally COVID and some other things, you know, harm reduction has a lot to do with that. Just so the council understands, one of the things I talked to Bill about, because Bill and I have some very good conversations over the phone at all hours of the night and day, um, about, um, you know, I I'm thinking that that what what I, what I'm envisioning is a, from the health department, where you're coming into the door now, that would be the entrance to the sanitaryian side, but make a whole nother waiting area and lobby uh, for the clinical side on the left hand side, which very well could end up being a two story building. Um, and and I'm a firm believer with what's going on in the county, that everybody is, it's not things that we're doing, it's because we get those nasty emails too. It's it's what the whole nation's going through, the migration to to a county our size or some someone that, um, believes in their second amendment or or an hour of second amendment and stuff like that. So it's, um, I'm I'm honestly thinking that it's probably going to be another 7,000 square foot addition.
Looking upstairs.
7,000 square feet. And then and in that way, now they have two different entrances, two different divisions, and the area that's using used, and and one thing I like about that is, is that, if the new addition is built, it can be 100% and the clinical can move over there on a, you know, during the week or a weekend and with no disturbance. Where if you try to use a little bit of what's there and you try to add on and then now it's now you're, you know, you're you're building all the addition, but yet you're remodeling some of the existing.
Keeping dust and noise to minimal.
And you and you say you got three storage units outside that you're you're using?
We have three controlled climate storage bays that we're running, and then also we have the two, two storage buildings inside as well.
Right, so just to let you all know what I'm thinking about, I think that that's what what it's going to look look more like.
And that will work better for everyone, even if like we did have a second story, having offices on the second floor. Like areas, lab and things of that nature on first floor, and we can, we'll be able to see more people in our community's actually smaller. floor, and we can, we'll be able to see more people in our community's actually smaller.
No, no.
Healthcare is better. It's, it's coming at a premium price right now, and not only as much as we do public health as in, always in the past of doing immunizations and women's health clinics and things, and we're also doing chronic disease self-management classes and educational classes and things of that nature. So we have to have more staff to be able to do those things. So having more staff, more offices and so on. So we've changed the public health base back when Mr. Barnhart was in and the Health Department. We've changed, and it's going to continue.
Well, back when he was there, you took a stick with it was on fire to stop the bleed?
He did. He inspected Noah's Ark.
I got the first computers for that department.
Is that right?
And we did, had no idea how to use them.
Well.
Still don't.
The only reason I brought that up, I mean, with the grant from, from the state and what Mr. Courage has to offer for the addition, you know, we're probably still going to be looking at doing a partnership of $1.5 million of our money. So.
Bring as much to the table as we can.
I know you will. You've proven that. All right.
Have you seen the old building?
I've not.
Got a new roof on it?
I did see that.
Looks, looks good from the outside.
Yeah.
All right.
Before you leave, I, once again, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank you and your staff. I've, you know, had the pleasure of working with you all in the past, and I've seen your commitment and your dedication to this community, and it's very much appreciated. And I know you're getting ready to, you know, kind of head into a tough time, but keep your heads up because you've got a lot of support behind you, a lot of people have confidence in you as well as ourselves. So thank you for what you're doing. Appreciate it.
All right. Mr. Costello.
Thank you, Bill.
You got a different look on you today.
Yeah, good morning.
Good morning.
I'll hit some of the things that you guys were talking to Bill about, but we do take part of those weekly briefings when they happen. We reach out locally, more so because we want to know how we advise our staff on where we need to be moving patients throughout the day. You had, he had mentioned the hospital. As of yesterday, they had 172 patients in the hospital. Now bear in mind that maximum flow or whatever, if you're just talking about beds, they can probably give you a number, but that also changes with staffing.
172 patients?
There's 172 patients.
Total patients?
Total patients at the hospital.
All right.
So much so that they were boarding patients in there anymore. And those are patients that have been on the transition to their beds on the floor somewhere for the maxed out, and they're having to maintain those folks down there where they are. So just to kind of give you some numbers, yesterday, from the COVID perspective, they had 32 COVID patients. They had 20 employees that were out on COVID quarantine. They had eight in their ICU, of which six were COVID, and two of those were on beds. So when you put all that together, you talk about your maximum flow and those numbers, it's kind of like when you look at a school, there should be a ratio of so many students per teacher. They have that same thing, so many patients per nurse, per doctor, for whatever. So those are the kind of things that you're looking at. And as I said, we use that so that we know that, okay, if I'm in that range, do I go ahead and move this patient to Winchester? Do I take him to Jefferson? Do I take him to Meredith versus getting into Berkeley? How is it going to adjust our wait times? We are at a point now where we are physically treating patients in the hallways. Used to be our state medical director at the time, his thing was, once you reach the hospital, your treatment piece is in. But it's at a point now where we're treating critical patients in that hallway. When we're going in and seeing doc, my patient's crashing, I'm getting ready to do this, I need to make you aware of. Usually what happens is they'll open up a bed somewhere, but we don't know how much longer that's going to be. They're just going to look at you and say, treat them. And then that's what we're going to do. But some of the numbers we talked about, as you guys said, you know, we're now 18 months into this, Berkeley County is just under 15,000 person, or, and that's those 18 months, which is the second highest rate of infection in the state because of the large populated. But what's shocking enough is that, I mean, you look at other things, our numbers are fairly lower than being that high of infection rate. So if there is a positive piece to that, that would be it because that would not happen, those things. We're seeing about 1,352 new cases and about 1,228 vaccinations daily. So we've got a lot of things going on there that are bouncing things out. For us internally, as I told you guys before and sent out some emails, we did have an outbreak with our folks that were participating in a training course that infected all students and instructors, and they were out for about seven days. That equated about one whole shift, but we had, that was all that we had to cover. Those people recovered, went back to work, things are going good. Currently, we have one office staff member that's now out of quarantine. Kid came home from school, running fever, tested positive, so eventually he arrived in quarantine and said, hey, take what you need off, take care of your kid. Also have the option that your case is, you can remote work in one, so that, you know, take your job, continue to get done. Other than that, we're super busy. It's not going to change. We're seeing, this week has been fairly light of pre-known COVID positives, but that doesn't mean that they were diagnosed later, whereas previous weeks, three, four, five a day, you're getting the call, patient's definitely COVID positive, you're taken to the hospital because of that. Subject, any questions that you guys may have? We're going to continue to do your job, stay positive, stay safe, and take care of your folks.
I was looking on the, I thought I pulled up earlier, but you're all right. We're just slightly south of 15,000 cases, total cases for over the 18 months, but looked like we had 56 new cases.
I think the number I have was 52.
Okay.
Right, it could have been.
No, no, I, I can't find it where I seen it earlier.
I was looking at state numbers, at 1,352, that was statewide, is what they're averaging, what they had Wednesday. They're averaging about an 18%. The state as a whole is averaging about an 18% positive rate daily, so 18 out of 100 people.
18% or 0.18%?
I got 18%. That's what he gave me.
Okay.
Positive rate daily for the state. Now, we may be 10% of that or less, less than 1% of that.
Yeah, because I was thinking like 0.18%.
Like I said, just looking at our transports to get things, that we're not seeing those patients that had been released, going back to the hospital. Some of the things coming down the pipe for us is Medicare is looking at, there's been a request with Medicaid to do a treat and place option, which is where we can treat that patient in the home, leave them in the home, or normally they would go to ED, and that would be a billable call, so you're not even a cost for that. It keeps these senses down with ED, keeps them in their home, and things of that nature. Back in May, Medicare came out with something very similar. It's just so convoluted that we have a conference that we attended in August where we put a lot of faith on a whole lot of attorneys that tell us, here's the watered-down version of what your kid can do and how you will about doing that. So these treat and place options may become more prevalent. Still hopefully, those are things we can do. From a staffing perspective, we're like everybody else. We're hiring. That's all I can say. Is paramedics don't fall off the trees. The state, what we're in is not appealing, career field, but we continue to work, continue to search, continue to try to practice people and recruit them to build our program. Subject, any questions you guys may have? Questions?
I do have another question.
Yes, sir.
When we spoke months past, we talked a little bit about percentages of response calls. Do you know where your percentages of response calls are? You know, you know, divided up between, you know, automobile accidents or, or overdoses or, you know, COVID?
We do. We break those down monthly and give to our board. There's like 20 to 30 different categories that they call in. The hardest, the biggest one is always the general illness, because this is just someone, today, I'm really not sure what's wrong, I'm not feeling well, and they run right around the 12 percentile. But our overdose rates, since COVID started 18 months ago, they've been up about additional 1.2 to 1.5%, which averages about 5% of our call volume. Other than that, we haven't seen a pull-out in major shit. But if you want exact numbers, I email you, you can break them.
Please.
If you have from last month.
Yeah, please.
One of the things that you would know, probably, I don't know if Chad's doing it yet, but would be the, we have the number of trans, of calls, we have a number of transports per month, and you would have access of how many of those patients that would be transported would be later tested positive, would you not? Because that would have to put your crew on alert.
Yes, they have a positive screen that comes through the Health Department or contact. At that point, through contact tracing, we would quarantine that crew, have them tested. And of course, we also, are you wearing the proper PPD? Are you taking the various precautions? And all of that's determined. And the good thing is, following that outbreak, we do have the healthcare exemption that allows us to quarantine for seven days. As long as they're asymptomatic, in that seven days for 24-hour period, they can return to work. They must wear a mask for the initial three days. So we agree with their 14 to 10, seven. But the, the numbers that, that Bill was talking about, just last month, I think it was somewhere around 1,221 calls. We're still averaging about 37 to 41 calls a day. We have had some days where we're well over the 50s. We're still transporting about, the transport piece really hasn't changed a whole heck of a lot because a lot of people are saying, hey, if you're saying, I'm okay, I don't want to go right now until, we're at that point where people say, unless I feel that I'm about to expire, I don't want to go to the hospital, just check me out, leave me here. But yeah, those numbers have definitely risen. Just to give you a number, you know, 10,000 calls two years ago, over almost 14,000 last year. As we look at our numbers in the first two months of the year, we're going to get that 14,000 or more for sure.
Well, the population keeps growing, so that's part of it as well.
Growth, utilization, service.
It's changing.
It is. It's just the dynamic landscape.
Use my statement that I used yesterday, they don't make men like they used to. Yeah. So, but anyway. All right. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
All right. Next on our agenda is Tim Zaid, Community Corrections Director, proposed HIDA pilot program. Tim, we were running ahead, or actually, we weren't running ahead, Nick Deal was 10 minutes late, so, and then all of a sudden you show up and we're, we're back on schedule. What, next, Togga is 10 minutes late.
We're still 10 minutes late.
Yeah.
I'll be brief. A while back, I don't remember when we started, Laura Pappard with HIDA, Lauren Cummings is the executive director of Northern Chando Valley Substance Abuse Coalition and myself together, and we put together this, this project that, I didn't come up with the name, Laura, it's, it's a long acronym, it's called Catalyst. Comprehensive Assessment and Treatment for Adolescents to Launch Intervention with Substances and Change Trajectories. Don't get caught up in the name though, it's, it's a, it's a program designed to, to engage high-risk youth and their families in our community who struggle with substance abuse disorder and mental health issues and such. So, so this was a SAMSA grant that, that we applied for. We put together this idea, this program. Laura wrote the grant, it's a SAMSA grant, which is Substance Abuse and Mental Health Association. And we had high expectations that we would get the grant, but we didn't. SAMSA ended up dedicating the majority of that funding to the northern region of the country, for whatever their reasons are. So Laura made permission to find funding to make this happen without the SAMSA grant.
Right.
For us, for Berkeley County, yes. So, so the original plan was to hire, the funding that we would be awarded if we got the SAMSA grant would be to hire a therapist, a catalyst, services coordinator, and a youth peer recovery coach, among some other monies for some other things. Laura was able to, to come up with $94,500 that they have officially told us is ours, if we're willing to accept it, to hire a therapist who's dedicated to juvenile services that would be on my staff at the Day Report Center, and a part-time youth peer recovery coach, so that we can launch the program as closely to the original design as possible.
Is this a year?
It's, it'll be one-year funding.
And?
And, and what Laura has told me is that the next time we apply for our yearly HIDA funding, she wants to just add it into our original awards that would be ongoing funding.
Oh, okay. That's, that's kind of the.
I can't promise you that at this moment, though. That's, that's what she has indicated.
Yeah, and no grants guaranteed, right?
But, but for now.
And this is a pilot project?
This is a pilot project.
For the entire country?
Yes, this is the first, the first time this has been done. So the therapist, we're, we're going to, we will be open to referrals from the courts, from Berkeley County schools, and from the hospital. I've already talked with a couple of the prosecutor's attorneys early on, we will start doing this. And at the time, there were 150 or something like that juveniles under, under legal supervision in some, in some fashion. We're actually going to treat similarly to how we, we use the QRT. We're going to knock on doors and engage these kids, even if they're not required to engage in juvenile drug court, for instance. There's only a few kids.
As we talked before in a meeting, bus drivers is a good resource.
Sure, sure is.
Yeah.
Yep. So I'm here to, to find out if you all are interested in accepting this funding and giving me permission to, to recruit for the therapist, and several weeks from now then recruit for.
Part-time peer recovery coach?
Yes. And we have the recruitment then that is done. We've been working on it this week. And when you see it come out, you'll see it's a therapist, we've ever were recruiting at different therapist levels, therapist one, therapist two, therapist three. Here's what the entry level is for each one, because we don't know either any one of the three therapeutics designations will do. But because there's different qualifications, experience, education requires for each one, so we didn't want to pinch-hole ourselves in. So when you see the recruitment, notice it's going to have a therapist one, therapist two, and therapist three. Classification reflective, but we're only carrying one. And this is a pilot project for the entire country, just kind of looking to deal.
How?
They're going to use us first.
So you got a, you've already identified over 100-some kids that could utilize this program? That's just one source?
Yeah.
That's just through the, that's just through the prosecutor's office?
We asked Tom and Lauren here today to kind of recognize them. Their schedules wouldn't, wouldn't coordinate with theirs, but they will be here just hopefully within the next month or so. But they did not want to delay the recruitment for physicians because the funding is available now. They would like to press this start right here.
So, so only, I do have a problem with it. And the problem that I have with it, if he's only, already has 100-and-some young children that are in jeopardy through one source, which.
Let's clarify. So these, these aren't kids that are required by the courts to engage in.
I understand.
This is like the Day Report Center. These are kids that we're going to go and attempt to recruit. So how many are going to?
Cannot.
I can't, I can't tell you.
Right, but similar to what's going on Thursday nights, right?
Similar. Similar, but I expect a lot more than, than even.
I understand.
Similar, yes. So on Thursday nights, these are, these, this is a bachelor's level case manager and peer recovery coach who are, who are out engaging kids in the schools and, and inviting them to this group. So on Thursday nights, these are, these, this is a bachelor's level case manager and peer recovery coach who are, who are out engaging kids in the schools and, and inviting them to this group. This is going to be a master's level clinician, um, who is, who has at, at bare minimum a sixty credit course hour master's degree in professional counseling or social work. I expect we'll get someone even with some experience or even a licensure. But at, at minimum, that's what we'll be. So, so even a higher level of professionalism, uh, as far services is concerned, are going to be provided to these kids that we engage. And we're going to, we're going to build. That group's close to full anyways. We're going to start building groups.
My, my problem is, I know how successful Tim is when he sets his mind up to something, which is everything. And for us to hire a part-time peer recovery coach is going to be an understatement, I think. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just allocating to say, if we want to, if we want to be successful, we need to make it full-time.
And Andrew, I'm going to talk about this. Tim and I and Laura have, have talked about. This peer recovery coach, this specific peer recovery coach is going to have to be a little different than the other peer recovery coach, just because and, and I'll use, and certainly I'm not qualified to be a peer recovery coach, but from, from a demographic's perspective, you can't have someone that's going to come off as the grand father figure of your kid. So if we hire, when we hire.
So you're saying you have to, you're thinking it's going to have to be someone more, just like our.
More age appropriate.
Right.
Somebody that can relate.
Twice I got called old today.
Um, someone that, that can, that these kids can relate to. Um, not saying that we're going, we're going to hire teenagers, but at the same time, it's going to have to be in a younger group than, than grad. We thought ideally.
See, I never, see, I, see, growing up, I always looked up to my granddad. And you had dispelled that whole thing.
Well, you know, ideally a graduate of juvenile drug court, eighteen, nineteen, twenty years old, max of twenty-five.
That's a smaller pool you're going to be looking for, that's for sure.
Because we have a couple of people in mind already.
Right.
But yes, it would be small.
That, that's the only, that's what I have a problem with. I mean, we, we can, we can start off part-time. I just, uh, I, I can see where it's going to become a full-time position really soon. I think your recruitment would be better if you hired a full-time instead of part-time.
I, from a recruitment perspective.
Absolutely, yeah.
It, it will. And.
And I think that.
Recovery coach can also help one, some of the other, some of, some of the other programs. It doesn't have to be pitched and hold to this. If, if we have some skin in the game.
That's what I was getting ready to say. If you, if he goes back to HIDA and say, hey, we accepted a grant, we appreciate, but I want to let you know what the county council did, they're putting skin in the game too.
Right.
What's the projected cost to do it from part-time?
It's for peer recovery, then it's, you're talking with, with benefits of talking probably twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars. And, and remember when, when Tim, you know, and I'm factoring in vacation and things like that, though, so.
No, I know you, you know what I'm doing.
When, when we, when we put, well, Tim, Tim puts these together, we present it to the council, we build in revenue sources that we have to know that we can do them. And that's primarily, um, you know, HIDA grants, state grants, things like that. What we don't build in, um, is what you see through state budget revisions, um, reimbursements, the parolee reimbursements that we receive, payments for D H A R, um, our, your Day Report Center is now the drug testing site for the state. How many drug testing? A week? Three hundred? Yeah, hundreds. And the state reimburses us for, for that. Um, so actually, that's a way of saying.
A good bit more.
Even if we have to commit some general fund money to make it full-time, we're, we have the, we have the revenues to support, to support that.
Well, and to answer Eddie's question, a peer recovery coach is about thirty-seven to five, a hundred percent. So with benefits and everything else, Mr. Davis, twenty-five thousand dollars additional of, of our pocket to make it part-time to full-time.
Well, I mean, I'm obviously in favor of being able to get these kids early. Get them early.
The, the juvenile population of Berkeley County is underserved, and I want to, I want to build that. And this is a fantastic way to.
I think it's, it's critical.
And this is in lockstep. It's almost like HIDA's in lockstep. Um, because this is, this is, is right in line with what you've been discussing for the past year. And they approached us. We didn't go to them and say, hey, if you'd be willing to work with us. They came to us and said, hey, this, this program is the most successful as long as, as well as the one in, in northern Virginia. We want, we want to do this. And then when, you know, the funding, the grant did not come through, they came back to Tim and said, we believe in your program so much that we, we, HIDA will fund this pilot program and the council as well to do it. It says a lot.
All right, so, um, we want to make a motion on accepting the grant and, and taking it from a part-time position to a full-time with the council making up the difference. And that will come out of contingency, I guess.
We have, yes, sir.
And by doing that, I think it shows HIDA, we're committed to it to a big time.
And, and HIDA has supported us and we've supported them. And I think we just continue to do, do what we're doing. We're doing great work. The only other thing I'd like to, I, I wish I would have done by now, uh, was probably a month ago, went downstairs on Thursday night and said, hey, you know, one way to get kids to come in to, to ask for help is to feed them. We need to find a way to feed them at night. You know, just pizza or something.
They'll be there this evening.
Huh?
They'll be there this evening.
I know. So, anyway, um, entertaining motion?
President, make a motion that we accept a, a HIDA pilot grant of cover of one full-time master level therapist and one full-time youth peer recovery coach.
All right.
Second.
Do we want to alter that from, and the county council chip in to make that?
With the balance of HIDA's offering of ninety-four thousand five hundred that the county council make up the balance from the part-time employee to the full-time youth peer recovery.
Thank you, sir. You second it?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries? And, and while we was talking, we're talking about Bill Kearns and, and the, um, Health Department. It's not going to be long, and we probably should have already started about an addition for Mr. Zai over there. So keep it back your edge and Josh, you need to start putting him, unless somebody says, no, you're crazy, but you know, you're already up to three hundred and something, I'm sure. Just in the Day Report Center.
It's going to be needed sooner than later.
Much sooner.
Can't even believe we're saying that, but.
You've been saying that for five years.
Every time we give him what he asked for, he asked for more. Kind of like a Gary Wine guy.
We just moved into this facility that we're talking about yet. Before long.
But we did design that for an addition, actually a two-story addition. And we know it'll take a couple of years to get that going. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything can get much easier.
All right. Any executive session today?
No, sir.
We have Mrs. Malk in the back there.
Uh, we do have Mrs. Malk here today. It's always good to see Mrs. Malk.
I came in to sign the constitutional paperwork.
Ah, there you go. All right. Any items from the public? If not, uh, Mr. Barnhart, will you do the honors?
I'm waiting for Mrs. Malk to.
Well, she's going to sign the papers. I want to do that during session.
The only thing I will say is I'd like to welcome anybody to come over and visit. We are right now in eighteen, seventeen, eighteen hundred speeds and, uh, we've still got lots of paper to go for.
I was, I was speaking to one of your employees yesterday and I said, you know what? I got to get down there and, and visit. It was down a couple of weeks ago and the difference is amazing.
Well, in the area that you reported and Jack has already repaired it, it looks wonderful. Let you know.
I'm glad.
That's good.
Good.
So we're making progress slowly but surely.
All right. Mr. Barnhart.
I'm due to recess.
We are recessed.